Close.
Is it?
Really?
Yeah.
It's too close.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Let's, let's call a meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, let's all say the Pledgeable Allegiance and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. City Clerk, 3.1.
3.1, Community Improvement Districts, 3.1A, Resolution Number 167395, calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing, the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the Downtown Community Improvement District, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district. 3.1B, Resolution Number 167396, calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing of the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the Alley Improvement, Community Improvement District, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district. And 3.1C, Resolution Number 167397, calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing of the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the Hotel Community Improvement District, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district.
Mr. Scrab.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As those lengthy titles are intended to convey, the action that you're being asked to take today is three separate resolutions setting public hearing dates for the consideration of CID petitions, and the proposed public hearing date is September 19th. By way of background, the Community Improvement District Act was approved by the Kansas Legislature in 2009, and then the city of Salina passed a CID policy in 2010, which I'll touch on in a moment. In terms of eligible uses of funds, the legislation provides for three broad categories, actually multiple categories, construction, provision or contracting for services, production and promotion of tourism, recreational or cultural activities, supporting business activities in economic development, and providing or supporting business employee training programs. And then it also details permissible construction as well as contracting examples, which would have been included in your blue sheet. Suffice it to say that the proposed construction of the hotel, funding of a portion of the construction of the hotel, the Alley Entertainment Complex, and the services intended to be provided in the downtown in the way of maintenance and security are all eligible expenses. So permissible funding sources for a CID include special assessments that can be levied on property, special sales taxes that can be levied in an increment of one-tenth or one-quarter of a percent up to a maximum of two percent for a duration of 22 years, or any other funds appropriated by a municipality or any combination thereof. Distinction between CID special assessments and a typical 12-6A special assessment is that 100% of the assessments must be paid by the property owners. There's no provision for city at large contributions for a CID special assessment. Another notable difference from a typical 12-6A special assessment financing is that not all the benefiting parties have to be within the district boundaries and subject to the assessments. The district can extend its benefits beyond the participants or the territory within the district. So in terms of financing, there's also options there. The option that's being proposed is pay-as-you-go, which is distribution of the revenues that's received to the CID for its specified use. Other options are full faith and credit bonds, which are typically known as general obligation bonds, and they're payable from the CID revenues as the primary source, but they're also, could be backed by a pledge of the city's full faith and credit. And then there's special obligations bonds. While they're not backed by the full faith and credit of the city, they are bonds issued based on the revenue source being the CID revenue. So in terms of methods to form a CID, it varies depending on the proposed funding source and financing structures. If a special assessment funding is proposed without GO-B, GO-bond financing, the CID may be initiated by a petition of all the property owners within the district, and public notices and hearings may be waived. If there's sales tax or GO-bond financing desired and less than 100% of the district property owners have signed the petition, then the petition must be signed by the owners of 55% of the land area in the district, as well as owners of 55% of the assessed value within the proposed district. And I'll touch on this later, but both of those requirements have been satisfied for all three of the petitions that have been submitted. Once a valid petition is received, the process to authorize a CID is that the governing body would adopt a resolution calling a public hearing on the advisability of the creation of the CID, which is the action item before you today. We would publish notice of the hearing twice in the local newspaper. We'd also send notification to all property owners by certified mail. We then conduct the public hearing, and then at the point that the process is far enough along and on the assumption that a CID were to be created, then it would require adoption of a resolution or ordinance authorizing the CID, approving the cost estimates, levying the CID sales tax, and approving the amount of special assessments, and approving the method of financing. The Act also provides a 30-day statute of limitations to bring suit or otherwise question the validity of a CID petition, so that would also need to run. So I mentioned the, our CID policy. In January of 2010, the City Commission approved Resolution 106700, which created Salina's CID policy, and that has been attached to your report as well. The policy was drafted at the time as staff's best effort to anticipate the type of CID projects that might come before the governing body. It prescribes the application process, the review and approval process, and since then only one CID application's been received, reviewed, and ultimately it was approved, and that was the S&amp;B South 9th Community Improvement District, which levied a 2% sales tax on the hotels owned by Stanley Leilert and his company, which were the Hampton Inn, Courtyard by Marriott, and proposed Hilton Garden Inn. The purpose of that CID was funding the portion of the convention center component of that hotel. So we felt that it was worth noting that while the policy prescribed submission requirements and review criteria in considerable detail, this format wasn't necessarily anticipated at the time that policy was drafted in terms of more of a community-wide effort, multiple funding sources all being considered at the same time. And so we're trying to make a best fit here in terms of what we've already done in the way of star bond and tax increment financing and the information we have regarding that and have had for quite some time relative to the CID application process. So general categories in the policy address the application contents or required contents, the level of financial participation by the applicant, the required application fees, evaluation by a staff finance team, the criteria of review for that evaluation, the process for city commission review, process for public notice and hearing, and then the actions and the assumption that it is approved. With respect to the policy, I would note a couple of things. We have received completed applications for all three. We've received the required deposits for all three. The financial security agreements are drafted and ready for execution. There has been some discussion about the nature of the downtown CID being more of a Salina 2020 effort than the other two more private efforts, and whether the application fee and funding agreement should be applicable to those. And that's something that we wanted to call to your attention at this point. That conversation is ongoing in terms of executing the funding agreement and whether the deposit would be applicable. So yesterday, we received the three CID petition applications that are attached to your report. Each of them proposes levying a 1% CID sales tax to fund specific projects for each district. As I previously reported, 1% is proposed as a downtown district-wide sales tax, and then there's two more isolated districts each proposing 1%. One of those being the hotel project and the other being the alley complex, so entertainment complex. So the net result of that would be 1% CID sales tax in the downtown and a combined 2% sales tax for the hotel and the alley entertainment complex. The hotel and the alley CID applications are more consistent with our policy and the approach that we anticipated when we drafted it. And the formation of the three CIDs has been included in the various star and TIF project descriptions that we've been processing since, as far back as June of last year. Additionally, the star bond plan previously submitted to the city contains considerable discussion of the proposed CID funding and the projects to be funding, which is due in large part to the attempt to strategically combine all those funding sources into a global downtown redevelopment project. So a comprehensive development agreement is currently being negotiated to address all the cost allocations associated with the broader downtown redevelopment project, and in particular, the star bond plan, sources and uses of funds, contains separate columns for the three CIDs, which that's also been attached to your report. The CID policy calls for review of the submittals by the finance team, and these particular CID requests are part of the broader redevelopment project. It would be premature of us to provide you that recommendation or our finance team review results at the moment. Our intention is to do a preliminary review between now and the end of next week and provide that, which will be in excess of two weeks in advance of the public hearing if it were held on September 19th. So the attached petitions represent in excess of 60% of the land area that is proposed for the downtown CID. Since the hotel and alley are single owner petitions, they represent 100% of each of those. And with respect to assessed value, they represent in excess of 70% of the assessed value. I would note that the city was not asked to, the city nor the county were asked to execute the downtown CID petition, and I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I think our holdings in the downtown were in excess of 20%. So that only leaves 10% unaccounted for. Additionally, Salina 2020 has asked whether individuals have indicated they still wish to sign the petition, whether they can do so and be added to the petition. So that's a question we'll need to ask of our bond counsel. So with that, the resolutions that are before you all propose a September 19th public hearing date that coincides with the date that you set for consideration of the star bond and TIF ordinance. And I recognize that this was a late distribution, so for your benefit as well as that of the listening public, I'll walk you through some of the attachments in the document. The first attachment that you'll find is the downtown CID petition itself, followed by, and I should know the number by now, but countless signature pages for the downtown district. And then additionally, the next item is the CID application for the alley. It is responsive to the, our CID policy in terms of its content. It includes not only the legal description in the district, proposed district, but a narrative description of the project, 47,000 square foot family entertainment center offering a diverse array of indoor entertainment, including a state-of-the-art bowling center with 24 standard lanes and eight boutique lanes, other amenities such as a video arcade, laser tag, game room, concessions, full-service bar and restaurant, and meeting space. They also provided plans and renderings, both footprint as well as exterior renderings of the building and estimated project costs. We also, and that petition's executed by the current owners of the property. They provided the requested information about the proposed financing, which is 1.6 million of star bonds, $628,000 of CID, and $3.8 million of non-incentive sources. They provided a petition for the Community Improvement District application for the hotel project, and very similar in terms of its attachments, the legal description, the map, a description of the hotel project, which is 114-room Homewood Suites by Hilton at the intersection of Santa Fe and Mulberry, and all suites hotel, including approximately 2,500 square feet of meeting space, a full-service restaurant, and a 4,500 square foot outdoor courtyard and event space. They also provided renderings of the site plan, the interior, as well as exterior renderings. And I think it's worth noting, these are identical to the attachments that have been in the star plan, star bond plan all along. They provided estimated project costs, detailed to land design, site work, at a total of $19 million, and estimated market value of $19 million, and estimated assessed value of 1.875. And proposed project financing of $442,000 of star bonds, $800,000 of tax increment financing, and $1,6029 of hotel CID funding. This map was prepared by city staff to represent in pink the verified signatures throughout the downtown district, and the crosshatch blue is the, those that did not sign, including the city and county's properties. And so they currently are at 61.93% of the land area without discounting the city or county's holdings.
Do we have that in our packet?
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
The resolution, the Community Improvement District policy is also attached, the resolution and then the policy itself. And then I had prepared excerpts from the star bond plan, but frankly, they duplicate the attachments that are in the CID petition applications themselves. The other thing that I would call to your attention back in my staff report is I provided an itemization of the various CID fund, proposed uses of the funds for the three different CIDs, as is currently shown in the star bond plan. $600,000 of the hotel CID for hotel infrastructure, $500,000 of the downtown CID for parking, hotel parking, $332,000 of the hotel CID towards the building, $628,000 of the alley CID for the alley entertainment complex, 2.7, almost 2.8 million dollars of the downtown CID for new tenant and vacant space construction, $1.3 million of the downtown CID for improvements to existing retail, $200,000 for legal and accounting expenses of the master developer, $2.3 million for downtown maintenance and security. I guess the other thing I should mention is I did attach the streetscape renderings in terms of what's envisioned for the downtown streetscape, which would account for some of the maintenance and security expenses, and then $500,000 of contingency. So with that, the conformance with the strategic plan, it's the same bullet points I've been reporting for a while now. It's consistent with our goals to be thriving both economically and socially, to have a quality of life that appeals to residents and visitors, to have the highest quality of services according to city commission direction, to have a downtown Salina that's thriving and a vibrant place with an artistic flair, to encourage and be supportive of economic expansion and market-driven tax-based growth and homegrown entrepreneurialism, creating mixed use and quality development and redevelopment, providing high-quality services, and maintaining a commitment to make the downtown a thriving and vibrant center in the community. With respect to this action, the fiscal note, the only expense that's associated with it would be the publication cost and the newspaper and the certified mailing cost. Any other expenses associated with creation of the CID would not be applicable until further decisions are made on your part at a future date. And so the actions that I've identified for your consideration are to approve each of the resolutions by separate motion, and as they're drafted, they set a hearing date to September 19th. You can amend the resolutions, establishing an alternate public hearing date. With one caveat, we do need three weeks in time lapse between the date that you take that action so we can get the public notice requirement satisfied. You can postpone consideration of these to a specified date, which would instruct staff regarding any additional information that you would like, or you could decline to act, which would result in deferring this action without further notice. So staff, at this point, staff recommends option number one. As I mentioned, we will conduct the finance team review and provide you, well, two things. We have the opportunity to request any additional information that we might feel is necessary, and then we can provide you with the outcome of the finance team's review, and that can be completed by next week. And as I mentioned, the downtown hotel and alley applications are more typical, and they're complete, and application payment and deposit have been made, funding agreements will be executed. The downtown, the application is complete. The only remaining question is the application of the fee and financial deposit and funding agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just have one quick one. I think we talked about it before, but I can't remember what the answer was. On the downtown maintenance and security, the 2.3 million, is that for ongoing services that the city might be providing already now, or construction, or is it a short term, or is it over a 20-year period?
Yeah, I'll take that. Well, what we'll have to do is, that's one of the pieces we'll work out in the development agreement as far as who and what, but it's anticipation that with that type of downtown, your maintenance is going to be different, maybe at a higher level. Security very well could be as well, so it could be contracted, it might not be. We don't know at this point in time. The other thing I'll recommend too, before it's approved, is to add the word programming, because we just, over 20 years, you don't know what that means. And again, that doesn't have to be us necessarily either, but, so it'd be maintenance, security, and programming, and that's something we'll have to reflect in other documents if that's what you want to do. But yeah, the point of it is, is I think everybody recognized to say, if you're really going to have a nice, nice downtown, these are things that are likely going to need to be enhanced, and so money was set aside to do that over that time. And again, that'll be spread out over the 22 years, isn't that correct, Mike? 22-year period here. But the other note real quick, while I've got the mic, is that Mike made reference on the downtown CID, in essence waiving the fee and the financial deposit funding agreement. We talked a little bit about that. I think that's justifiable, because as he mentioned, our policy is really set, really created for a single project, you know, with a single type developer. It's not really created for a, does a whole downtown want to create a CID and see what they can do with it and have all these pieces without a single entity in charge? And so you wouldn't, if you asked me, well, how would you divide up the fee? I couldn't even tell you in that case. So I think that because, that approach, which is a good approach, because it's really difficult, quite honestly, in my opinion, to get a downtown to agree to a CID, because they're actually adding a sales tax to themselves, recognizing they need to be in a competitive environment with other areas of town. So that's a, to actually get the signatures to do that's a pretty big deal. And as Mike mentioned, when you throw, if you take the city and county property and take it out, the actual percentage jumps up pretty high with what they have. That's a really good sign, it's a very positive sign from the downtown merchant. So that's a big deal, because it's difficult to do with downtowners, because there's so many different business types and all that. So, but I totally agree, it doesn't make sense to apply the fee or the financial deposit funding agreement on that particular one, but it certainly does with the other two, and they have provided that.
And I would add, the intent of the fee and the funding agreement is to cover expenses incurred. We're addressing this as a more global CID application. I don't know that we will have one-third isolated expenses for the downtown CID that are distinguishable from the work that's being done already.
When you say the city, you said early on, the city and the county accounted for 20% of the CID?
The land area.
Land area?
Mm-hmm.
That, not including this space, though? I mean, that's parking lots.
Yes, yes. Well, yeah, if you look at the map, this is not in the CID district.
And then on, on those, on the overall downtown one, I think that the alley one and the hotel one are kind of similar to, well, identical pretty much to the one out south, so one owner, easy. On the, the percentage that didn't sign, do we, is there any other information on that? Were all of them asked, or were just some of them not asked? And these don't have to be answered now, maybe at the, when we have the hearing on it, if some of...
Right. And that's actually more appropriate for the applicant. I don't know.
Because I know from my standpoint what's important with that, because it's a big group, and some people opt in and some people opt out. And I just see kind of our role as representing all of them and saying, if the number's 55 and we're at 60, how many of the 60 were entities that, or not entities, but properties that kind of have a land use that is currently or future-wise would be collecting sales tax? I mean, United Way isn't down there, but if the United Way's down there, United Way signs it, it really doesn't affect them or the hospital, or, because they're not in the business really. It doesn't affect them if they're not collecting the tax. So it'd be nice with that, to have some of that information as to what percentage of exempt property, you know, you look at that. And I don't need to know that today, but...
I could share a few things.
Okay.
I mean, I would like to just share, I think it's, I mean, I think you, you asked a question to me that's very important. Sorry, Guy Walker, Pluvican, 500 Grace Boulevard. Don't want to get scolded by the mayor, like. You ask a very valid question, I think, that was, we realized was critical early on when you're, as Jason pointed out, when you're trying to gather the consensus of such a large, you know, area. And to us, and then the other kind of nuance that I felt was really tricky, and in a way kind of strange, is that you have to be a property owner to have a vote, because the statute, the state statute doesn't contemplate like a business that leases the building. So if I'm a coffee shop like Tammy Jo at Ad Astra, she doesn't actually get a vote. So we felt it was really early on to, we felt it was really important early on to gain consensus from all the retailers, because clearly, as you pointed out, they're the ones that carry the burden of this. They're the ones who, they have to charge their customers the extra 1%, and they have to be willing to do that. And so we met with, well, I don't want to say just me, it was a huge group of people working to do this, and we really, I truly do not think we could have done it without Salina downtown. They seem to have a great relationship with their retailers, and Penny was amazing, coordinating, helping me coordinate with some of these meetings. So I just at least wanted to point out really quick that we had about 20 retailers specifically that were like gung-ho, all-in, we met with and were, and I, so I just wanted to share a few of those. Steve Howard at Cozy Inn, Tammy Jo Jarvis at Ad Astra, Jim Loder with The Market Shops, Lisa Rollefsen with Penny Lane, Monty Shadwick with Blue Sky, Rusty Leester with Pignos Kates, Tony Dong, Martinelli's and Santa Cruz Burrito, Kevin Romi with Paramount, Blake Blackham with Midwest Music, Robin Coats with On the Pot, Laura's Antiques, Taco John's, Burger King, Milestone Hearth, Gary Stansberry with Salina Blueprint, Maureen Madison with Eccentricities, Wayne DeBay with Flowerneck Community Theater and Stiefel Theater, and there's more. I just felt that was, obviously that's a big core of the downtown corridor right now. So just wanted to at least share that with you.
All right, I appreciate your sensitivity to that, because that is a very important...
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, my question is, as part of that CID, you know, there are funds allocated both for new business, new tenant, and then also existing, and I was wondering if there could be some sense of unfairness as monies are distributed or allocated for those particular uses? For instance, if, you know, a sports bar goes into business next to Blue Sky, would that be an issue, kind of thing?
I think it's also a good point, and also questions that were asked when we met with people like Tammy and Monty. And Monty, by the way, is one of the biggest supporters. He shared yesterday with the consultant that was with the Development Strategies Consultant that his hope is that there's five more of restaurants downtown, because he feels like, obviously, the more foot traffic and the more core you can get down there, the better he'll do. He just, I think, and Tammy Jo was another one, who said, you know, she said, I don't want a Starbucks to go in across the street, but she said, you know, I realize that what that means is that, she said, but I do understand the draw of a Starbucks, and how much, how many more people that will bring to downtown. And she said, I just have to do a better job than they do. And she said, I think I can, so...
Sounds like Tammy.
Yeah, it does, yeah. She's definitely very assertive, so it's, but it's encouraging. I think that she understands both pieces. Yeah, it's going to be a challenge, but at the same time, I just have to raise my game. And she recognizes, I think, she's got a unique offering, and a lot of people are looking for a unique offering. So I feel like I wanted to address, and then from your, to your point, I think, as Jason mentioned, you know, possibly another organization having an involvement, I do think that many of the people who signed felt that that was important, that there was some organization, and statutorily, I believe, the city has, will have a role in every decision. I mean, they, you, you will be part of making those decisions of whether or not a certain business gets a certain amount of those funds that are set aside for things like new development and existing retail. But it was important to the, to those business owners and the property owners that they also had a voice in that, so that they could have an opportunity represented by some organization or board to say, you know, we don't think that's right for downtown, so we're going to vote against it. Or, you know, come to the public meeting and say, we don't recommend that you approve that amount of incentive. So I think all of those things are currently being negotiated in the development agreement, so I don't want to get too deep into it, but I did want you to know that they are being considered and understand that that's, could be a potential concern.
Yeah, Commissioners, when you look at the sheet my had, page five of the report, it shows the dispersment for the CID funds. On all of those dispersment pieces there, with the hotel, the alley, and the new tenant vacant space, and existing retail, all those pieces, there will be agreement terms that are going to have to be out there at some point, whether they're in the master agreement or whether they're in a agreement to be agreed upon later, subject, which means that if there's not agreement, there's no... there's not agreement, there's no dispersal of that until there is. So those will all have detailed agreement terms to them to talk about how, what are the goals, well, and some of them, let's just say, for example, the new tenant vacant space construction, what are the goals of what we're looking for there? For example, expanding market, you know, that type of thing, retail versus non-retail. Those things will all be spelled out at some point in time before any dollars would be dispersed, and that will end up coming in front of you, and you'll get to approve in whatever form that is, that you're satisfied with that piece of it. And then that'll also include the who and how and some of that stuff. So right now, that's not worked out, but we've talked about the development agreement or a subsequent agreement, which the development agreement might relate to. And so it's going to be basically one of those approaches, and so you will get the chance to approve exactly how that works. So, and that, at this point, in the development agreement, as you know, and I think Mike mentioned, everything's targeted towards that September 19th date. And so, and that, so that development agreement ties into all the pieces you've dealt with so far, including this. And so that's where the details are at, where again, in that agreement, it'll say, there will have to be an agreement in the future that's been approved before the funds can be dispersed for any of these purposes, so that you always have that opportunity to make that decision at that time then. So we'll work, we'll continue to work on that, as Guy mentioned, but you won't be asked to approve anything and know that dollars go out without you being able to say, well, but we need to talk about the logistics of how and who and that type of thing. That'll still come out later for you.
So a, so a non-signatory to the CID would receive the same attention and consideration as another business that did sign?
I think the statute would require it, no question. I mean, the dollars are spent within the entire district, so I don't think, you know...
And I think you want to bring along converts.
Yeah. And there were some converts along the way. I mean, you know, not everybody was supportive at first. It definitely took some, you know, took some conversations and a lot of meetings, and, you know, Ken Boone's group doing a great job presenting what's possible downtown, I think, was really influential for a lot of people. And, you know, people travel, they go to other communities, and these business owners see what's happening in other communities. And I would say that a lot of these ideas, they weren't unique, they weren't our ideas, they're what other communities are doing with the CID in terms of like, as Commissioner Davis pointed out, the downtown maintenance and security. If you are familiar with Kansas City, it's a former home of mine, and there's little neighborhoods that are just, almost just like downtown Salina, they're very urban and kind of a very broad mix of things, and they have created these CIDs. And now, on a Saturday morning, I was having coffee, actually, at a coffee shop, and there was a gentleman with his trash cart and his logoed shirt for the neighborhood, you know, scraping gum off the sidewalk and, you know, cleaning up after the bars from the night before, so that the coffee shop could open and not be in it. So those are just kind of some of the things we've been thinking about and talking about as a really benefit to the long-term success of the downtown area.
Right. And I think that's probably the most critical part, and I agree with you that the programming is probably as important as maintenance. And is it possible, do we, are we in any problem if we don't at least get that language in when the clock starts here and then work out the details later? I mean, are we able to edit that into here?
Sure.
And is there, and I'd just like to note from the applicant, is that, was that the intention also all along to have programming?
Absolutely. No question.
Because it seemed like that was always part of the conversation.
Yeah, and you could ask, because today you're just going to set the public hearing dates, but you could ask us in doing that to put that word in there with the security and maintenance, and then we'll have that trifecta, I guess.
Well, just because when we advertise this thing, that somebody just doesn't come back and say, "Well, where did this come from?"
Sure.
And then, and then the other thing is, is just on the, on the notifications that have to be mailed to all the owners, is it just a letter, or is it a packet like the, like the start, that like the big...
No, it's a letter with the direction where they can find the rest of this information.
Okay, perfect, because that was pretty expensive.
Yeah, commissioners, when you think about it, we've done it twice with the Starbond aspect, we've done this. There's been thousands of dollars spent in mailings to continue to inform people with lots of information in there too. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of pieces to this, and really the issue is, there's so many pieces, it can be confusing, but the information's been put out there. We've been available to speak with anyone who would like us to. And I know these guys have spoke to a lot of people, much more than we have. They've been out there on the street, and that's, that's good.
Well, yeah, that's...
You were in here crunching numbers.
Yeah.
Your mic, Mike was doing...
Mics are never cruncher.
I did want to, I did want to point out one, a piece of conflicting information in your packet, and it's, it was, it was our doing, but it was intentional. Mike...
Greg's back there.
Well, in the, in the, Mike, in the staff report pulled the, where he lists the table with what each dollar, where the dollars will go for the specific CIDs, there's $500,000 in hotel parking hard costs, and that's from the broader downtown CID that we've been talking about. And that was in the original Starbond project plan, so I think, if I understand it, it has to stay in there for the time being, but we did not list that in our, in the application for our hotel project CID, because it is our full intention not to do that and to put that back into the pool. At the time, you know, this thing is kind of evolving as we go, but I think it's important that the project plan that's, that has been submitted to the state stays the same, but at some point at which we can, we will amend that, so that we will not be taking anything from the larger and broader CID. So I just wanted to be sure and point that out, so.
Guy, where would that $500 go to then?
Well, that, I think that...
Or $500,000?
To me, that would be a part of the, you know, part of the discussion that we have when we, when it is the appropriate time to make the change. I don't understand municipal law at all, so I'm not sure when the appropriate time to make that change is, but...
I think for the downtown CID, if we, if we're aware of where you guys would like that to show, just like we just addressed on the programming, I think we could address that for this piece, and we know that we will update the other pieces. I don't think that's a big deal.
Okay.
It should be minor enough.
Yeah, I would think that was knowingly intentional on my part, too. I recognize that, but with the Starbond plan being the most public source at the moment, I fell back to that to keep options open and recognizing, as we've mentioned, there's a development agreement that's going to finalize these details.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is that all you have?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you. I did want to say, though, I didn't start off right, I wanted to say thank you for attending a special meeting at 8:30 in the morning on a Friday, so.
That was the easy part, reading this last night was a hard part.
Yeah, I appreciate your time doing that as well.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Is there any other public comment? Nothing? Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt resolution 167395.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 167395, calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing of the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the downtown community improvement district, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district downtown.
Setting that date to September 19th.
Do we need that in there?
I think that's a good idea. The other thing I would add is, is in the motion, if the motion maker's okay with it, to include a waiver of the fee in the financial deposit funding agreement, since this is the downtown CID that we're, that we're making a motion on.
I agree with that.
Okay.
We'll include that in the record then.
Okay.
And do we need any language as to the chart on page? Is there any reference to that? I mean, Mike had made a...
There's no reference to that in the documentation. We'll address that at the time we actually adopt the plan.
Okay. It doesn't have to be part of the advertisement or any of that stuff.
Just the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 167395. All in favor, say aye. And those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Yeah, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 167396, calling and providing a notice, giving notice of public hearing and the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the Alley Community Improvement District, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district, and set that date for September 19th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 167396. All in favor, say aye. And those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries 5-0.
I move to reapprove resolution number 167397, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on September 19th of the advisability of creating a community improvement district in the city of Salina, Kansas, to be known as the Hotel Community Improvement District, and regarding the city's intent to levy a community improvement district sales tax within such district. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 167397. Those, all those in favor, say aye. And those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Do I have an approval to adjourn?
We have.
We have a request.
We have another item.
Yes, we have a request for...
You would have, after him.
Yeah, we would have.
Yeah, I really need you to, I really need to cover a couple of things on the legal side with you, if we could. I don't think I've given Shandy a time, I'm going to say 15 minutes. We're going to have to hurry, but I think 15 may work.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just rotate it just a little bit. Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of these matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 9:30 a.m.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor, say aye. And those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Is there any action after that? No?
We don't expect any.
Okay, thanks.